All right, welcome everybody. Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If we could please get a roll call, Maureen.
Weigel.
Here.
Wasowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
Have all present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item one point two, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item one point three, Mayor's announcements, have a couple of announcements. I wanted to thank United Way, I got to go over for the Trike Wars, I know they had another great fundraiser over there. Also want to thank Gunner Holtie, he came out and helped us lead the kickoff the event with myself and a couple officers, escorting him around the track during the National Anthem, it was a it was a great event. I want to thank the Children's Museum, I got to be a celebrity waiter for last Monday night, and I know they did raise some money towards the Capitol for that project, so really a lot of positive energy just to see more than two hundred people there, all really backing and really supporting the project was pretty amazing to see. September tenth, I was out at the Rally for Recovery, that's a great event that's been going on for a number of years out at out at the town square, and just an opportunity for people that are actively in recovery or involved in substance abuse, mental health, a lot of different to these entities that help out around town to come together and kind of celebrate and rally for, you know, the people that are hurting and others, and just a great event, one that is always just something great to see, all the great work that people do around town. Then finally, on September eleventh, I got to go to the Optimist Club, and they were exactly as their name states, very optimistic about the future and the future for kids in Grand Forks, I wanted to hear what the city was doing, so really some positive couple of weeks. And then lastly, we got a couple, I'm gonna start with this one first, I want to offer condolences to the family of retired Sergeant Tom Murphy. Not only was Sergeant Murphy a thirty-two-year veteran of the Grand Forks Police Department, but he had also served in the Vietnam War. He served his community and his country, so and was a friend to all, so if we can keep Tom Murphy's friends and families in our thoughts and prayers, he's he's passed away. And then lastly, he didn't ask for this, but Chief Nelson, just want to give you congratulations, I think this this probably won't do you justice, but just want to mention Chief Nelson, his last day will be Friday, September twentieth, so this will be his last council meeting. I'm sure he'll attend many more as a citizen, because these are so enjoyable, but at least in uniform. He's been with the Grand Forks Police Department for thirty-six years, he's served as police chief for almost ten years. He's been also active with the National Guard, retiring as a sergeant major on January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. His final position was serving as a senior enlisted leader for the state of North Dakota, so thank you for not only your dedication and hard work for the city of Grand Forks, but also for the state of North Dakota, you will be missed, sir, so let's give him a round of applause. All right, that's all for Mayor's announcements, so we'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations, there are none this evening. With that, to move on to item three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
Three point, yeah. Three point one is public hearing and approval of Renaissance Zone Plan update.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing at item three point one, anyone here to speak on item three point one? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll open it up, it looks like Mr. Conlon's here to answer any any further questions on it, otherwise we'll be looking for comments or motions by the council.
Motion.
Motion to approve from Vice President Weigel, excuse me, and second from Ms. Wasowski. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Conlon, excellent work.
Three point two is public hearing and second reading of ordinance establishing the two thousand and twenty-five budget, that's inclusive of the two thousand and twenty-five salaries, to also adopt the resolution for the twenty-five fees and introduce ordinance amending the franchise fees with Excel and ODAC for the large volume electric users, and also introduce ordinance amending the city code related to the drought mitigation or the Red River Valley Water Supply Project Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsted, obviously the culmination of many, many months' worth of work. It's it seems like it's compressed in a few months, but it's really the job that goes all year round when it comes to budgeting, so I know there's a couple of new attachments for tonight that I know we'll go through, and then we'll open it up for council's final action on the budget for two thousand and twenty-five, so Ms. Dorsted, did you want to?
Certainly, I can I can start, and I'm gonna let Todd speak to the attachment with the strategic priorities, and then.
Did you want to open the public hearing first?
I suppose we could do that, do you want to do that now before we do those attachments, all right? Let's start then on item three point two, let's open the public hearing, so anyone that wants to come forward, please do so orderly, and we will line it up for everybody, so. Please.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, President Sandy, and members of the council. My name is Sheila Schreiner, I'm a senior real estate appraiser with the Assessing Department, and I'm the president of the Employee Representatives. Tonight, the employee rep group would like to express our support for funding the ECI at seventy-five percent as opposed in the mayor's budget. We understand the city council's goal to reduce mills to not inflict any impact to taxpayers. However, we do not support reducing the ECI below a seventy-five percent to achieve that goal. Funding the ECI at seventy-five percent keeps us within the boundaries that were suggested by Condry and Associates to keep Grand Forks City's salary salary plan competitive within the comparable market. At the ECI level of seventy-five percent, this already is a compromise that was not a fully funded ECI at a hundred percent. The two thousand and twenty-five regional comparable market average salary plan increases seven point two-three percent, which includes their step increases as well as their ECI and COLA combined. The mayor's two thousand and twenty-five budget increase is five point seven two-five percent, which also includes the two and a half step percent and the three point two-two-five ECI, and that is at a seventy-five percent ECI value. This is lower than the comparable markets at seven point two-three percent, but a good good compromise between saving money in the budget and keeping the salary plan competitive for retention and recruitment. Keeping the salary plan competitive is crucial. Over the last three years, we have lost over fifty, nearly fifty-five percent of our workforce. This is a significant amount of job knowledge that has left the city. This places a demand upon our remaining employees to fill the gaps and to train the new staff. Being able to increase staff retention with competitive pay may help reduce the strain. We also would be able to help recruit, it would help recruit better qualified applicants as we would be comparable in the market. The factual data supports a seventy-five percent ECI based on Condry and Associates recommendations, market comparators, and overall employee recruitment and retention. I, along with several that are here tonight, employees as well as employees throughout the city, would encourage you to keep the ECI at seventy-five percent. Keep it within the budget that has been proposed by the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Mr. Dewey.
Mayor, members of the council, Joe Dewey, Grand Forks Firefighters Union President, and tonight the Vice President of the Employee Rep Group. The Employee Representative Group respects the difficult decision and position that you as city council members are in when developing and approving a budget that meets the needs of a growing community, while at the same time trying not to increase taxes or fees. We understand that the salary plan is a large part of the annual budget, and this group would like to take a few minutes of your time to reiterate why it's important to us. We thank you for your time and ask for your assistance to keep the salary plan as presented in the budget with seventy-five percent ECI funding. I have heard from some of you that you don't like our pay plan, I could talk all day about issues with the old plan that we just moved away from, and the lack of funding that was a part of that plan. Realizing that there is no perfect pay plan, I ask you to separate your feelings about the pay plan and focus on what city admin and employees are saying we need for two thousand and twenty-five. Also, please realize that the employees have made concessions to get to this point. Since April, the Employee Rep Group has been working with city administration, HR, and finance about employee priorities. We work towards this budget that was presented, and we feel we've made sacrifices already to keep the seventy-five percent ECI funding in the budget. Our city employees continue to do more with less on a daily basis. This year, there was requests for seventeen new positions throughout the city, and none of those were filled. The city continues rapid growth with new neighborhoods popping up all over the place, services continue with no full-time employees added. Some other key facts, the plan that we're talking about making an ECI contribution to was written in May of two thousand and twenty-three, which was sixteen months ago, and it hasn't been updated since. So we're asking you to support the seventy-five percent funding, the three point two-two-five, as in the budget. We also have some of the lowest-paid departments heads in the state of North Dakota. In January two thousand and twenty-five, we lose the current NDPR's defined benefit plan that is one of our biggest recruitment tools, I'd like to say that again, because it's that important. In January two thousand and twenty-five, we lose the NDPR's defined benefit plan that is one of our biggest recruitment tools for new employees. State, county, and private sector continued benefit from our our value to retain our employees. So far this year, we've had thirty-three voluntary resignations, that's six percent of our workforce year-to-date. We have great employees doing great things for this city. I'd like to tell a brief story about a month or so ago. The fire department I was working was doing required quarterly training at our Public Safety Center. At the same time, the street department was at our station filling cracks and sealing around concrete panels. City electricians were starting to install and upgrade our lighting in the station. The water department was moving a hydrant for us after one of our employees dug the excavation site for the hydrant to move. As employees, we're doing more with less, we collaborate on a daily basis to get the most out of our people and equipment. When you talk about our pay, you can't start the sentence with "we have great employees" and then discuss how to shortchange our pay plan. Our employees work too hard and are too dedicated to see firsthand or hear the next day about attempts at defunding our pay plan, which was funded by the mayor with hard work from city employees. In closing, I would like to thank the collaborative effort that occurred to get the seventy-five percent funded in the salary plan included in the budget, and I urge your support to keep it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. All right, any anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing portion of item three point two? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and then why don't we finish the presentation, Mr. Phelan, and then we'll go to council. And Ms. Dorsted, there we go, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for those comments. Maybe just a review of how we got to where we are today, it's been a little bit since we've been with this council body to talk about the budget. We did have a presentation Ms. Bovette did on the salary plan back on July eighth, and we had a preliminary information at that time about the the budget to come, which was ultimately presented to you on July twenty-second. It was brought forward on August fifth for preliminary approval, several motions by city council were made that night, but ultimately that budget was approved as the mayor presented on August fifth. That gets us to today, just some budget highlights as I go through this. The staff report, I've tried to sum up the key portions of the budget detailed out in that staff report, I'm not gonna go through it word for word, but just to summarize, the total budget net of those internal transfers is two hundred and seventy-one million, that is down from previous budget year of two hundred and seventy-four million. That's gonna really fluctuate year to year just depending on those large capital projects like a wastewater treatment plant. Of that, the general fund portion of the budget is fifty-two million, which is up from previous fifty million the previous year. When I look at property tax, and of course, just speaking toward the city piece of the pie of property tax, we brought a budget forward to you for a two point nine-three mil reduction. That brings us to a total of, I was looking back to two thousand and twenty, it's five point two-four mil since since two thousand and twenty. What that means to the residential homeowner on on average, these numbers are on average in dollars, then what that equates to is fifty-five cents a month or six dollars and fifty-nine cents annually per hundred thousand dollars of value, or one point five-two percent increase. So that's the the budget that's in front of you tonight. Our median value home is roughly two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, so you would just take that times two point three-nine to see what the median value homeowner would pay. As a recap on salaries, like was stated, that was presented on July eighth. What was brought forward was that seventy-five percent ECI and the two and a half percent step. Also brought forward for consideration was a floating holiday and the change in that accrual of vacation scheduled to match the states. Also, we did recommend or was approved for a change in a health provider to health partners for cost savings. Seventy-nine percent of the general fund budget is made up of a combination of public safety, public health, and streets engineering, with fifty-six percent of the total general fund, public safety, salaries, as was stated, seventy-five percent ECI and two and a half percent step. We continue to fund capital reserve, we are using general fund cash as part of this for one-time catch-up items for streets and public safety, and that attachment was also included with with your budget binders. We have the use of economic development funds for capital maintenance repairs that are needed on our two parking ramps, and then we project and budget to build a reserve for future capital and capital reserve for those ramps to prevent future spikes in budgeting. The mayor with this, as is written in your staff report, does recommend a priority of the human needs or the CSG allocation to be used toward homelessness with this budget. And CIP, all that information of the six-year plan for project plans are included in your budget binder for streets, capital, utility, infrastructure, your flood protection, public buildings, that's all been included with that. Public transit, dial-a-ride, we did come forward with a recommendation and a couple changes there from the senior rider age to from sixty-two to sixty-seven to encourage people who are able to use the public transit system, and also looking at fares going from a dollar fifty to two dollars for for the transit ride and three to four dollars for dial-a-ride. That, and speaking with Dale Bergman, we'll have follow-up public hearing on that and more information to come before that change would actually be made. And then utility rates on the average bill, three dollars and fifty-four cents a month increase, or four percent, that's based on a four-thousand gallon a month user, and it does include that Red River Valley Water Supply Fund that's ordinance is included for your preliminary approval tonight on that ordinance, and that initial fee would be at four cents per thousand gallons. I think that pretty much sums up the highlights, and I'm going to let Todd speak to the strategic priorities.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Burchenski, Mayor Burchenski and members of city council, the mayor and I were speaking, you know, the last time we really had a discussion with the city council regarding some of the strategic priorities, we were back in kind of in the midst of the pandemic, in the midst of Fung-Fung, and and we created some strategic priorities, so we did review those that we created in this two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two timeframe. We've attached that, and and I just wanted to summarize that, and then further, we've created some new ones. And importantly, as part of this, and the one I'm gonna go over first was not only the city administration, but the city council engaged, and and it really is heartening to know that sometimes you wonder how worthwhile has your time been here over the last few years, and I'm I'm really pleased to say that we've gotten a lot of accomplished over the last few years. I want to start off with the mark, the new pay plan is obviously going to be discussed tonight. That was a transition in two thousand and twenty-four, this would be the second year of it. I would say it's probably the the one time where the employee rep group and the city council got together in a meeting under a joint meeting, and it was a positive, productive meeting, probably the one of the most productive meetings that I've been around, and I think that's why the employees are so passionate about continuing to move forward with that with that pay plan for many constructive reasons. The other thing that Adam Johnson and we've done is to move forward with really a lot of cybersecurity enhancements around here. And so I'm really proud of the IT department and Adam Johnson and all that they've done, and to that point, even even I've gotten caught up on my IT cybersecurity training, so it's been really great for all of us. The other part is, you know, one of the really showcases of Grand Forks is our downtown, and it's it really is, and it was highlighted by Representative Armstrong highlighting really some of the positives gone on. Beyond that, we have looked at, we have implemented a third party into our rap management to make sure those are managed more appropriately. The other thing that's in the two thousand and twenty-five budget is to rehab both the corporate center ramp and also the central ramp, too, so we've made a lot of progress in that being. The wastewater treatment planning, you know, it doesn't get a lot of highlight, but really the wastewater treatment plan is probably our largest and most important economic development tool when we come to agribusiness developments. And right now, we're wrapping up phase one, which is renewal of the existing facility, and we're we've or have just started phase two, which is the expansion of that facility, and you'll hear a lot about that, so as we bring agribusiness developments into our community, whether they're looking at using wastewater beneficial reuse or or needing to have us treat their wastewater, that phase two expansion is gonna be incredibly important for not only our industry, but our our growth in our community, and so that's well underway. The other thing we should be quite proud of is this siren radio, we were one of the first implementers of that system, and that's a state interoperable radio network. And so Grand Forks was was one of the early initiators, and so should really feel proud of our PSAP, our fire and police that were really really at the forefront. The other thing, and the mayor mentioned the fact that importantly, that Chief Nelson is retiring, but even as important as that is that we've prepared ourselves for his retirement, and we have a strong police department, and if you look around the country, we should be very proud of the the stable, dynamic neighborhood policing police department that we have, because that doesn't happen in any town USA, and so we have that, and they've gone through a lot, as has been noted. And we've come out with flying colors, no matter what's been thrown at us, so we really feel like we're at a good spot, whether it's an internal candidate that gets the new police chief position, or if it's an external, we're in a really great spot for a new police chief to take over our department department. The other thing, this was brought up a little bit, we we did in end of twenty-one, start of twenty-two, we did sign a new five-year agreement on on recycling. And this is really another quiet thing that we're working on, is that's a solid waste in inner. in inert landfill redevelopment plans, and that'll extend the life of both the solid waste landfill and in the inert landfill. And so we're working on plans that we can do that. So really beneficially reusing facilities that are already there, and so we don't have to expand, because as you probably can well manage it, it's kind of hard to cite new facilities. And so we're trying to maximize as much as we can where they're at. Another proud moment, and this is really a nice handoff to Public Health Director Tess Wall, is, you know, the previous Public Health Director Debbie Swanson and her team worked really hard on reaccreditation as far as our Public Health Department, worked on it and kept it going through the pandemic. And I think there were some thoughts about, should we just let it go and move on? But importantly, in 2024, they did reach that goal, and what an opportunity. And now we have two accredited departments, one in public health and one in the police department, so really proud of that. And obviously, we've transitioned out of COVID operations, and so we did that in a skillful and skillful way and moved back to regular operations, too. The Alara Center, you know, if you look back to this time when we created these things, there were a lot of unknowns. What was the future of Grand Forks in this country coming out of the pandemic? And I'm happy to say that Grand Forks has responded very well. And who would have ever thought in 2020, 2021, that we'd be better off in moving into '25 than we were then? So it's an incredible story of what has happened with Grand Forks. We've only built momentum in our community, as highlighted by really a terrific year we're going to have at the Alara Center. It's going to be a record-breaking year. And in part, that record-breaking year occurs, certainly we have a third-party manager in OVG that's running a great operation, but it's important that the city council allocates funds to make sure that facility remains top-notch. And whether it's been the new roof, the suites area, or the upcoming convention area, that's in part why that facility is so well-attended and so well-thought-of in our community, because we maintain it over time. So, and we really sustained the operations of the Alara Center through the COVID by doing as much as we could as part of that. So again, trying to look back three years ago, it's quite incredible where we're at here in Grand Forks. The other thing, I think that some of these large regional projects, the 42nd Demers, again, we worked hard and we finally got this federal grant, and it's important to note that that is going to be completed in the '28, '29 time period. At the same time, we're going to be, that that's concluding, the interchange will be under construction in that same timeframe. So as we, as we finish up one major project, we're going to be starting the next. And as you guys well know, we've even received a flexible transportation grant to next year start doing 47th Avenue. That will be a key component to interlinking the interchange, and so we're well on our way. And again, back in this timeframe, I don't think anyone, if we would have come back, if we would have thought what would have happened here, we would have been really struggled that, is that really going to happen? So it's really an incredible story that what we're saying. We did not receive the RACE grant, and that was a planning-level grant to look at an inner-city bridge, and this city council's on record to say our emphasis is on Mirafield Bridge, not the inner-city bridge. Likely, you're going to see a regrouped effort to come back to city council with a new RACE grant and try to, we did not get the original one, but there are still groups moving forward. I just would highlight the Mirafield Bridge is really important to get done, because as we continue to move south over the next 20 years, we're going to want to get that corridor completed, because we're going to grow there relatively quickly. So that's really important of why we emphasize the Mirafield Bridge corridor. Downtown, I just want to give an update on the Epic. You know, two of the three buildings are up. The third building is meant to front on Demers Avenue. Dakota Commercial has taken over the management of that facility, and we anticipate likely in 2025 to come back with you with a more locally-driven structure and ownership, as there's lots of issues to go through with Epic. But at least we have local management that's managing that project. They do want to continue to move forward with the public event space, but there's lots to sort out financially before we can get there. And so we're on a bit of a pause until we can get through it, but they know that event space will be critically important to operate that memorial, that facility. Memorial Village is, one is complete, and the city council did approve a 90% 20-year tax exemption on that, and that helped UND to move their athletic offices into the first floor. And so, and it also provided for market rent. So that's one thing that city council should feel proud of, that without the city of Grand Forks leading that effort to get that tax incentive done, we wouldn't have Memorial Village up. The other thing the city did with Memorial Village, we helped a lot with infrastructure. So again, without the city of Grand Forks, we wouldn't be seeing Memorial Village one. And then Memorial Village, too, we're well underway. The softball complex is going to get opened this coming weekend, on Saturday, which is a big deal. And so we had lots of ups and downs, ins and outs, but ultimately, when you drive by there at night, it's pretty darn impressive. So you should take an opportunity to drive by there. We anticipate in and around there that we will be doing some infrastructure improvements to include University Avenue and Second Avenue that will enhance that entire area along UND. We've talked about Franklin on Fourth. Tonight's agenda includes the final piece of the alley puzzle, which is the paving of the alley, but it's nice to see that that's going to get occupied here in September. The alley is proposed to get paved this fall, and really will put a final piece to that whole thing. It's been a multi-year project, but here we are, quite impressive. And then the Block V, and that's, that was the St. John's Building, which is the historic building. That project has seen some improvements, but they've never come back for the growth fund. So we've done, we did lots of projects in the downtown area. That project has, does look better, but it has never asked for that. And then we did a series of transportation projects that are all complete, things we haven't updated in 2022 and '23 and '24. We've done a whole lot more transportation projects that I won't bore you with, because you guys all approved that. But we, the point is, we've gotten a lot of major projects done over the last several years. The other thing that we've worked on is the strategic plan for the growth fund, and so that got completed. And part of that strategic plan was really to focus on the Hive, and getting that completed, and you know, I'm happy to say that the second floor is now outfitted, and we're going to have more tenants moving in on that. The other thing we did not do is, as part of this budget process, we're not recommending to fill the position of operations manager at this point in time. That position, the candidate that was in that position fortunately was able to move forward with East Grand Forks as their economic development director. So we're going to pause on that right now, and so that position's in 5996, so that impacts your 2025 budget. We are going to come back to you this fall, and Human Resource Manager Haley Rosasen is in the crowd, but we've come up with a study and a review, and then we intend to bring that back about how best to move forward with the Hive long-term from an operations perspective. So after this budget is approved, we'll bring back that operations plan for you guys to review and approve as moving forward with the management of that particular facility. We're working on the water treatment plant redevelopment currently, and more to come on that, I would anticipate. Ultimately, some likely some decisions later this year or early next that will ask you to move forward as part of the development plan with that particular facility. We sold Corporate Center 1 and 2, and some of the proceeds of that, we're already benefiting from. I think this year and next, you're going to see a lot of agribusiness development. We anticipate Epitome Energy coming back to give us the yes or no in January, if they're going to move forward the project. Their project is estimated about approximately 550 million now, and so the costs have gone up, and so they're working through those costs. And with all private developments, you need investors, and so they're working through that. But I anticipate that project coming back in January with a plan to move forward. We are working on other agribusiness developments that we hope to be able to bring back in early '25, too, that are going to be, if we can, if we can move forward with them, are going to be quite impressive and really good for the community. So more to come on that. And I just want to highlight, the other part was that we really were focused on data centers, and we've been successful with Core Scientific, SunDog Mining, and Northern Data. Those have been more cryptocurrency, crypto mining, and really what our focus is on '25 moving forward is probably more in the artificial intelligence. And those are different entities that we're looking at, but we're looking at opportunities with those companies to include what Core Scientific is looking at that, but really, really at a heart of being, executing that. The Nissler School, thank you to the Jobs Development Authority, we move forward the Workforce Center. The Career Impact Academy, again, without the city of Grand Forks and the Jobs Development Authority, we wouldn't have the Career Impact Academy that we have going up right now. Without the city and the JDA purchasing that property, demolishing it, restoring it, we would not have that facility going up. So as you drive by it on Gateway Drive, again, without you and the JDA, we wouldn't be having the growth and development that we have right now going out there. I think really the important things, the mayor asked that we shift our focus to quality of life and move away from these accelerate loan programs and startup loans. So our focus now has been more what's invested in our people and invest in quality of life. So as part of that strategic plan, we did pause on these two programs, and we move forward with more quality of life investments. And it's interesting to know, you know, we're going to plan to have a special city council meeting to brief you on the All True Indoor Sports and Aquatic Complex, and we're also going to brief you on the Children's Museum. So when you look at back to what we were talking about in 2021, 2022, when you look at these things, it is kind of, makes you pause that, you know what? A lot of things have come together in this bullet here of looking at the Alara Center master plan, trying to look at a destination park, a turf and indoor and aquatics, even the tech learning center, which ultimately went up on Gateway Drive, but all of those facilities are all aligned on 42nd Street. So it's really incredible that we've always thought of the 42nd Street corridor being the destination corridor, and with the Career Impact Academy and the indoor sports and aquatic complex, and potentially the Children's Museum, we've added real three critical pieces along 42nd Street that we're looking to move forward with. We sure hope the Columbia Mall moves forward with redevelopment. We've reached out many times to include with the mayor, but as they say, you've got to have a dance partner on those things. So I know council member Friedel, that was one of your initiatives to move forward. That's probably one thing on this list that we regret that we haven't made any progress. But that's got to be on our list to continue to work that. Pleased to say the Grand City, we had local developers move forward with developing, redeveloping the Kmart Mall, the Kmart store itself, so it can be done. We can redevelop commercial space that was formerly retail, so it gives us hope. Again, the Gateway Corridor you just approved, extending the Renaissance Zone to the Gateway Corridor, and you even expanded it, so we're on mark there. And again, the us getting rid of that old hall at the end and putting a new facility there right next to our visit greater Grand Forks is a really big deal. UND is likely to announce something close to 15,000 students, which is pretty incredible. And a lot of that is the city of Grand Forks partnering with UND a few years ago and saying, let's, let's work with them on redeveloping the campus, so when students come to town, they get a wow factor. And so all those things that just, when people drive down, they say, wow, that all of a sudden happened, that happened because we planned it, and we partnered with UND. And so the city council should feel a lot of pride when you drive down University Avenue Corridor, because that would not, would not have happened, again, without the city of Grand Forks. And then the All Van Boutique Hotel and Commercial Development is what a piece that we have now that's been completed. So all those things, it's quite incredible that the city administration, working with the city council, all that we've accomplished with all of our partners, we really have done a lot of, a lot of good, and I'm really appreciative of you folks as city council now and past city councils, allowing us to work on all these great projects that we've made so much progress on. The last piece is, the mayor asked that we, you know, we take a look at kind of where do we go from here?
Mr. Phelan, let me cut you off real quick there, just I do want to extend a thank you to not only the city council, the staff as well, but I mean, just you take a high level view and just look at the work that's been done. And as he goes into the next strategic plan, I think it's amazing just to see the amount of projects that have the red ink next to it that got done. I think that's pretty amazing, and as you're going to see another list, I hope we're back here in three or four years as Todd looks at this next list, hopefully a little bit more expediently, we'll be able to get those done and come back and see red ink all over those, too. So just want to thank the council, it hasn't always been easy, but we've managed to make projects better by the debates that we've had up here and what we prioritize. So, you know, some of the new council members, you maybe weren't a part of a lot of those, but really hope that you're a big part of some of these in the future and more. There's certainly more that the council can add to this list or edit as they see fit, but just wanted to take a moment and now we're looking back, now we're looking forward. So, thank you.
Again, we want to, quickly, we want to continue to work with you. Workforce is important, we've got a great team from department heads to everyone who does all the great things on the street. We want to maintain that, so you have a great team. I think one of our focuses in public safety is renovating and expanding the police department. We have so many needs with the police department, PSAP. And the other initiative I want to point out is that integration with the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, Representative Murphy, has really made this dedication that he would really like to see BCI agents integrated with our police department and our police officers in that building, so we're going to do everything we can to make that happen. Again, we talked a lot about this. The mayor really has made a focus on, let's do the day-to-day road infrastructure stuff, so we'll have an emphasis on that. We're going to continue citywide development all around the city, continue to work on these legacy infrastructure projects. And, you know, most of these projects that we're talking legacy from 47th to 42nd, to the wastewater treatment plant to Red River Valley, they'll all be done within the next 10 years. So it's pretty incredible that we're going to get all of those done within the next, within the next 10 years. Thank you to the Jobs Development Authority and the city of Grand Forks for working on air service expansion. We should hear word on our grant by the end of the month, and so hopefully we get positive words in that we can start looking forward to 2025 and more service. We are working on many potential manufacturing expansions, and so we continue to work on that day-to-day and on that, in that vein. Again, entertainment is important. We are talking, we continue to talk to Odyssey Theaters, and they're the owner of the old AMC Carmike Theater on 32nd. They are still interested in redeveloping that, and so hopefully we hear more of that later this year or early next. So they are, they are still interested in that. Children's Museum, the indoor sports and aquatic, and I think council vice president Weigle really has made an emphasis on this, is that let's, let's make sure that we bring tournaments, we bring training, and we bring competition. So we are going to work with all the various entities to make sure that we can really fill that facility. University of North Dakota, we continue to work with them, all true, obviously. I think we should point out, not only is the city of Grand Forks strong, the Grand Forks Air Force Base is strong, UND, all true. We're really at a top point in Grand Forks with all of our strong institutions that are doing as well as ever in our community. And then the, as I mentioned, the airbase, Grand Sky, I just want to point out, you know, the B-1 bomber mission is going to come here early next year. We've been told that it's up to 900 people, probably 400 to 500 people at a time, starting in January and likely through the most of 2025. So what a, what a big opportunity for the city to do that. The other thing that we do understand is that 2025 will be a big growth time for a space development agency, TRMC, so lots of opportunities in that vein. We talked about the Hive and really supporting all UAS ecosystems, so we're really going to spend some time on that. And I just want to say, I think the other really theme in 2025 will be value-added egg. We anticipate hopefully a few expansions or new developments in that area here in this next year. So that's kind of a recap of what we see in 2025 moving forward, and hopefully we can come back here in a few years and really be able to check off a lot of those lists. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, I think that's a good highlight. A lot of work's been done, a lot of work left to do, so appreciate that. I think that's a good point to move forward. We got President Sandy, you got a comment?
Yeah, just a quick question for Mr. Phelan. Thanks for that presentation and lots of good information. It really is amazing how many good things have come to fruition in our community. It's a quick question related to economic development and the Block 5 loan, is that, is that still available to them? And if so, is administration able to fund that request administratively, or does that need to come back to council for further approval?
I'll defer to Mr. Gostin.
Hey, Dan. President Sandy, it's been a while since I've taken a look at that, at that agreement. I know that, like most of the agreements that I've crafted, there are a number of conditions that needed to be satisfied before we'd provide that funding to them. I just don't off the top of my head recall all of those conditions. And, and I believe the growth fund approved, or the JDA approved, the lending based upon the conditions that were enumerated in that agreement, one of which was, of course, taking a first-position mortgage on the property, so we'd be fully secured with the property. I knew that was one of the conditions. I just don't, I just don't recall. I just, I just don't recall all the others that were listed in that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Gostin. I just ultimately, I'll get to the punchline. And that loan was supported and approved by a previous council. And I don't think our intention, although I will defer to the agreement, because whatever we have in the agreement, we need to, we need to honor. But I don't believe it was our intention to leave that open ended forever. And so in my opinion, what I'd like to see is if they come and ask for it, that it comes back to the city council for affirmation. But again, I'll defer to whatever the agreement says. Thank you, Mr. Phelim. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Sandy.
So with that, yeah, I'm going to just open it up for comments, questions, or adjustments to the main reason we're here with the 2025 budget. So anybody that wishes to go first, feel free to speak up now.
I'll go first.
Okay, Ms. Osowski, please.
I had a few different things, so maybe we'll start with the easiest and the less controversial. I noticed on page 529 of our bond, of our binders where it states our utility fees. And I noticed that everybody's rates went up except for the larger users. And I would like to see like where it goes after the four yard dumpsters and it goes to the six year dumpsters. I would like to see the rates for the six and eight yard dumpsters go, go up as well or be equal to what everybody else is paying because residential went up and most of commercial did, but not the large dumpsters. And I think that they should pay their fair share. So I would like to make a motion that we adjust these accordingly and bring them up to the same percentage as the rest.
Okay, we got a motion to adjust on the six and eight yard dumpster containers to the same percentage increase that the other garbage dumpsters?
Yeah, because they, they have no increase. And I think that our large dumpster users should get an increase as well. If the residents are getting an increase, I think that everybody should get an increase and it should be fair across the board.
All right, we have a motion there. Ms. Lipsch can obviously comment on that, but we do have a motion. So I just wanted to see if there was a second on that motion, then we can have further discussion. Is there a second on that motion? Got a second from Ms. Lunskey. So Ms. Lipsch, maybe you can give us some further insight on the dumpster costs.
Mayor Bochensky, council member Osowski, we recently did a cost of service with Burns and McDonald's and they found that our six yard and our eight yard dumpsters were actually overcharging for. And so that's why there's no increase in those two sizes.
I think if the residence rates are going up, that everybody's rate should go up and it shouldn't just be put, I mean, on us as residents and commercial users should have an increase also. So.
But that's why that wasn't proposed on the budget.
Those dumpsters can be purchased for residents as well if they're cleaning out their house. It's not only for commercial. Anyone can buy those?
Correct.
Rent those, okay. Ms. Lunskey.
So who did the study?
Burns and McDonald, the landfill consultant that we hire.
So they came up with the, the other dumpsters were actually?
Underfunded and these were overfunded.
Okay.
Based upon their mathematical equations of how much material those dumpsters hold versus the smaller dumpsters.
And who generally uses the six and eight yard dumpster?
Anybody can rent them as temporary containers, obviously more businesses and small businesses. And then there's a lot of shared usage businesses like apartment buildings, restaurants, things like that.
So what does like the average restaurant, how many yard dumpsters do they have?
I would guess most of them probably have a six or an eight.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Bochensky, I think if you look at all the enterprise funds, sanitation, water, wastewater, stormwater, so we do a cost of service. So we look at all the various customers and then we set up rates based upon their cost of service. So if you're concerned that, you know, we're not fairly attributing the cost to the appropriate customers, we do do studies on that. And then based upon that study, then we set up the rates accordingly. And that's why you don't even see like on water and wastewater, sometimes residential rates are going up less than industrial or commercial. And sometimes, you know, residential is going up more versus commercial, industrial. So we're, so that we can always justify what we're charging the various customer classes.
So you're charging based on what the expense is to the city? So one may go up because it's cost more and one may go down because it's not costing as much. Okay.
I guess I just don't see how, you know, but.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second. Why don't we, so a motion in the affirmative would be to change the prices so that the percentage change in residential would be the same percentage change in the six and eight yard dumpsters. And then a motion in the negative would be to keep it as is. So if you could do roll call vote, unless there's any other comments related to that. Seeing none, why don't you do a roll call vote, Marine? Mr. Sandy, please. President Sandy.
I was just going to say that it's hard to, it's hard to argue when we pay consultants to research this and they have lots of experience setting pricing on these sorts of things. So although I did appreciate Ms. Osowski's understanding and wanting to make sure that our, the commercial users are paying equally the way residential users are, I think taking the advice of the people that we pay to help us set the pricing is probably warranted in this situation. So I'll be voting no against in this situation here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Sandy. All right, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Dorstad, please.
Weigel?
No.
Osowski?
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
Bean?
No.
And Sandy?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion is defeated, one to six. All right, Ms. Osowski, please.
The next thing that I would like to talk about would be the franchise fees for XL. And I believe it's, there were two of them. There were, there was a lot of stuff crossed off and very little added. And I, I read through the parts that were crossed off and it really concerns me to eliminate as much wording as we did. I think the first thing I'd like to look at is it's paragraph 9.1 of the XL and 8.4 of NODAC, they're basically the same. The company may collect and add to its billing of the customers a surcharge, each and every customer location representing the applicable franchise fees. So my understanding when I read that was that this prevents XL Energy from reducing franchise fees for one customer and adding them to the other. And I didn't see anything in our new wording that prevented them. Because I know we were going from more regular users, we're talking about the more regular users and the high voltage. And I'm nervous that when, you know, if we do start bringing in crypto data centers, AI, these are obviously going to be high voltage users. And it makes me nervous that XL Energy will then pass those franchise fees because before they were paying a lower franchise fee, the high voltage users, then they will pass those franchise fees onto us regular customers. And I, I feel like this paragraph in both of the documents prevents them from doing that. And so I guess I would like to see something like this added back in where it states that you can only charge the franchise fees, you know, per customer. They can't charge me 4% and, you know, all true or whoever, I don't know if they do it on nonprofits, but all true then gets a franchise fee discount because I'm picking that up. And so I just want to make sure that we're all equally charged on that. The other thing that I was a little bit concerned about that was eliminated out of these contracts was where it actually stated how they were going to bill us. And it had the formula when it, this one doesn't have a number on it, but it states kilowatt hours of electricity supplied and sold by the company over customer hours of electricity usage. And I, I guess the way I looked at it is with having this in our contract, it kind of states how we're going to be billed. And if we don't put something in our contract with these people, I don't know how we're going to be billed. And so I think it's best that some of these things stay in here. And I mean, unless there's a legal explanation on why these things were removed.
Mr. Gostin, I think I'll just briefly summarize. Well, first, I mean, the change was to make everything equal. In the past, we had megawatts, I think it was 20 megawatts and above would go to a lower tier. Now they'll be equal with everybody else.
All 2%.
All at 2%.
Yeah.
So I think that's definitely a positive. I think the only ordinance change you did was removing any of the new language that had created that 0.75, a higher tier, and just exted all that, which was only newly created several years ago. Is that, but you can answer the question more in a full, full capacity.
Thank you, Mayor, and council member Osowski. What the changes reflect is to go back to what it was before we had the reduction for the large users. So everything that was crossed out was added maybe two years ago to allow for both XL and NODAC, if they had one of these large users, to then assess a franchise fee at a lower rate. I think it was 0.75%.
Yes.
And so with the, with the rates going back to the 2% for everybody, all we're doing is putting the agreement back to what it was before, before this happened. So this, this then brings it back to status quo before we, the city council had approved that 0.75% for the large users. So we're just putting it back to where it was before.
Right. I really like though where it states that you can only charge franchise fees for the electric, you can only be billed for the franchise fees for the electricity that you're using, which is the 9.14 and also the 8.4 on the NODAC one. And I think, I think that really protects our citizens and just all around energy users. I mean, I expect to pay a 2% franchise fee and I wouldn't feel right though if other people had to pay more. Or, oh, you're high voltage, even though we pay a 2% franchise fee on you, we're going to give it, you know, we're going to charge you 1%. And then I don't want them to pass those other franchise fees onto other users. So I guess I don't understand why we couldn't have something like that in there, like 9.14. 9.1, 0.4.
The, the franchise fee, they can't, they can't charge a greater than 2% franchise fee to a customer. I mean, that, that's the limitation. And so this 9.14 was added specifically to that large volume electricity user franchise fee. That, that's, that was the intention.
I talked about all users, not just high voltage users. And, and so that's, I, I just, I feel like this prevents XL Energy from doing that. And I want to make sure that the high voltage users are being charged their 2%, I'm being charged my 2% just on the energy that I use. And there is nothing like that in the old document that you want to go back to. I don't understand why something like this can't be added to our new contract just to make sure that they don't see it a different way.
And I don't have any issue with that. We just got to get the approval of both NODAC and XL. I've never heard of them charging a franchise fee different between customers.
Right.
And it's a matter of just contacting them and explaining that the 2% applies across the board.
Yeah, like I can only be charged 2% for the energy that I use. So I guess I would like to motion that that be added back into the contracts with both NODAC and XL Energy just to make sure that they are billing us fairly.
And Mayor, one point, this is the first reading, so you're going to have to do a second reading to apply that. So in the interim, we can certainly have those discussions.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on that then about, that doesn't get approved through the final budget?
I think it'd be good if we're going to make that change to do it now so we can have a look at it in completion before the second reading. So we do have a motion. Do we have a second on that item?
Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Berg?
I believe there's a representative from XL Energy in the audience that may have some insight for us.
Ms. Kester, are you willing to give us some insight? Are you going to charge Ms. Osowski 12% and me only 1%?
Mayor Bochensky, members of the council, Catherine Kester, Community Relations Manager for XL Energy. I just want to clarify that our franchise fees are set and assessed by city council. Our company collects it on the bill, so it's a standard 2% across the board that is set by you all. We collect it and pay it out to the city quarterly. So we do not make that decision. It's a filing with the Public Service Commission. We change the billing message as you decide, but it is standard 2% across the board and that we don't decide that, that is all set by you all.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I do want to keep us in order here. So do we have a second? Or are you content?
I'm not content. I would still like some wording in our contract just to make sure that we're protected.
All right, do we have a second?
Second at first, a vote at least.
Okay, we do have a second from Mr. Weigel. Mr. Bean, did you want to, now we can open up the conversation. Mr. Bean, anything further?
No, I was, I was going to say that, I thought we should second it. One thing is, is that this is just first reading, right? That's not what I heard that says. And so between now and the next, our next meeting, we should be able to get further clarification. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Lunskey, please.
Can you repeat the motion? Just.
Ms. Osowski, can you repeat the motion?
I motion that we re-add in 9.1, 9.1.4. I mean, obviously we can exclude the high energy voltage users at the bottom of the last three lines, but the first chunk of that paragraph where it states that they can only charge, they can only charge me a franchise fee on the electricity that I use.
So, Ms. Lunskey? All right, any further discussion? All right, Ms. Dorstad, why don't you give us a roll call vote again?
Sure. Weigel?
Yes.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
Bean?
Yes.
President Sandy?
Sure.
That passes.
All right, that motion passes four to three. You'll have to see how that fits with the rest of the language and bring us something back that doubly make sure that they're not going to charge more than 2%.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Ms. Osowski, did you have anything further?
Yes, one thing I'd like to add is going forward into next year's budget, I would like to see, like, we don't really have to discuss it too much now, I would like to see a fog permit maybe put in place. I know that's the fats, oils and grease. Right now I don't believe that they pay anything, although there is a fog reinspection fee that we charge. I'd also like to take a look at the rental licenses that are only charged to individuals and duplexes. And then I would also like to make a motion that out of Fund 2163, that we take the human needs and we give 50% of the human needs part to our Grand Forks mission for food to help feed people and give the other 50% back to the citizens.
Are you wanting to do that through? Are you wanting to do that through a transfer from 2163 to a property tax to the general fund, or how, in what direction?
No, because there's a humans' need portion under one, under our economic development, there is a human needs portion. And I would like, I believe this year it is almost $160,000, and I would like to see that half of it go directly to the mission to help them feed the hungry and then give the other portion back to the taxpayers.
Right. And do you want to transfer it to the general fund, or how are you punting it? As a mill reduction, or how did you want to move the?
I'm not sure what, can you tell me how that works? I don't know if you transferred it or not.
2163 is a sales tax-based fund, so then you're not spending it, but you're not, it's not a mechanism. If you moved it, if you did transfer that other half over to the general fund.
I mean, we could even.
Ms. Dorstad, maybe you want to?
Mayor Botenski, Councilmember Osowski, I just want to be careful. At this point, we cannot increase the budget from what was preliminary approved, and by doing a transfer between funds increases that budget. So I believe for your purpose, the funds would just stay in the fund.
Okay, so you're reducing the extra expenditure, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So that, you want to do the math on what, was it 159,400?
Yes, 159, I don't have the exact. 1, yep, 159,135 is the total, so.
Who's got a calculator?
Yep, 50% of that.
All right, 79,000, so the motion would be to allocate 79,567.50 to the Northlands Rescue Mission from the Human Needs Fund, and then eliminate the other 79,567.50 from the.
17.0.
Okay, we got a motion from Ms. Osowski, second from President Sandy. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Lunskey?
So where does that Human Needs Fund usually go?
Do we have, is Colin Hansen here this evening? Doesn't look like he is. Maybe Mr. Phelan? I know there was an email, I think I can, I might be able to pull it up.
I think, right now, what was created, the city council created the Human Needs Fund as a complement to the CDBG funds, and that community group recommends those funds, and it comes back to city council for final approval. But when that group gets together, they're looking at CDBG funds, which are federal funds, and then also the city's complementary funds with these human needs. So I think what you would do is, generally, if I recall what Mr. Hansen had sent out, is that I would say about, probably about 68 groups, nonprofits get funding. I think, if I recall, this year, the Northlands Rescue Mission got about 27,500. But there were a handful of other organizations that are in similar nonprofits that are doing, you know, kind of in that range. We're in that time, I would say in that range of 20,000 to 30,000. So if you do move forward that motion, I suspect you've got probably five, six, seven other organizations that would, would not be eligible for funding. It is a competitive process, so they do submit, and then there's a group that reviews. It's rare that any organization gets as much as they request, but.
I've got the list here for 2024. Looks like homeless helpers received 10,000, the Northlands Rescue Mission received 27,500, St. Joseph Social Care received 25,000, Global Friends Coalition received 24,000, Prairie Harvest Mental Health 24,000, Share House 24,000, Red River Children's Advocacy Center 10,000, and United Way of Grand Forks, Grand Forks 10,000. That was a 2024 allocation. All right, Ms. Berg, did you have a comment?
Well, I appreciate Ms. Osowski's desire to fund the mission specifically. I think it's important that we keep that open for the, that citizen committee to make those decisions. They're put together, they're well-versed in the needs of our community, and I wouldn't want to just pull funds away from other nonprofits. I know in the past, Ms. Osowski, you've mentioned, well, that's the job of a nonprofit, and, well, nonprofits should do that, but nonprofits don't just receive money. And so it is difficult for nonprofits to find funding outside of their donor base, and so I would be, I would urge a vote no on that.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Any other comments on that item?
Mayor?
Let Mr. Veen.
I guess I had the question, especially I'm trying to figure out maybe a little bit about what's broke, because I do like the idea, we've been successful with the Citizens Committee. I certainly would love to see more money go to, you know, feeding the hungry, but that comes at what impact to the others who are also needing that funding? So it seemed like it's worked well. I understand the, you know, the need or the desire to do more in one area, but it seems like they've been all treated consistently and well-evaluated. So I do have a bit of a concern with this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any further comments? President Sandy, did you have a comment?
We've been having the same conversation about the nonprofit community in our town since I was originally elected to the council and prior to that. Doug Christensen and Kirk Coon and Terry Biarke and we all would argue about the funding for the local nonprofits. And back then, in 2010 and 2011, Doug would very adamantly say that we have too many nonprofits that are doing the same things, and they don't work together to try to streamline and get the most out of the limited resources they have, let alone the resources that our community provides. I, I see that, to me, I don't see that, that that's gotten better. And I'm a big supporter of the local nonprofits that do layman's work in our community, but they're not working, they're not working together trying to reduce their overhead expenses. And for the most part, since COVID, many of them have expanded considerably, their employees and their programming, without their long-term resources to pay for it. And so I think as we added additional funds, they all added additional employees and services. And I'm not saying that that, perhaps it's necessary, I don't know, but I do know that multiple not-for-profits in our community, but again, are doing really good and important work, are doing duplicative services than other not-for-profits are doing. I think, you know, for me, I think we have a very serious issue with poverty in our community, and there's a very obvious need for a significant increase in food and being able to provide food to people in our, in our community. And after meeting with Sue Schirck and the folks at the mission, I feel very confident that that is a very important place for us to put funds. And I am supportive of this, of this initiative by Ms. Osowski, and we'll be voting to support it. Of course, I'm just one voter, and if it doesn't pass, so be it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify. So some of the money goes to the mission. What happens to the, so the committee will still decide where the rest of those funds will go?
So as the motion stands right now, the remaining funds would be, would remain in the Fund 2163, so it would not be allocated. So it'd be a reduction, you'd be reducing the budget by that amount.
Okay.
The overall city budget, yeah. All right, Ms. Lunskey?
Just a reminder that I think the mission is great, but the mission doesn't have space for children. I think there's a huge need in our community for families. I think this is a huge mistake to, to not fund these nonprofits.
All right, any further comments? All right, seeing no.
I have one.
Mr. Veen?
I have one question. Mr. Sandy, you talked about the duplication. Are you thinking that the ones that are currently getting these funds now are duplicating services?
Yes.
Could you give me an example?
On both the mission and the United Way, provide food, food banks and food services, for example.
For, for different audiences, though.
Are they for different audiences? Why would, what, people that need food, need food?
Right, but not all of them are at the mission.
That not, not everybody has to be at the mission to get food from the mission. They hand out boxes of food daily to families that need it.
It's my understanding that the general public can go there and get food without anything else, with any kind of documentation or anything, without even staying at the mission.
And I'm not saying that what the United Way is doing is bad. I just, there are only so many resources, and we're paying, we, we, our community, the city, the, the people that make the donations, our community are paying for redundancy in our nonprofits. And I'm, I'm not, they're welcome to do that. If our people in our community want to pay for duplicative services, that's fine. I don't hold, I think they're all doing good work. I'm just saying that I think that the city of Grand Forks should concentrate its funds on the biggest issue that we have related to poverty in our community, and that's food insecurity. That's, that's my take on it. Again, that's just my opinion, though, and apparently it's Ms. Osowski's opinion as well.
All right, Mr. Veen, yep, thank you. Mr. Veen, do you have anything further?
No, thank you.
All right, any further comments? All right, Ms. Dorstad, if you want to roll call vote, please.
All right, Weigel?
Yes.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
And Veen?
No.
President Sandy?
Yes.
All right, motion was defeated 3 to 4. All right, Ms. Osowski, do you have anything further this evening?
I think I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
If I think of something, then I'll ask.
Yes, please, please do. All right, other comments, motions from council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So a question for, for discussion purposes for the group. If I suggested that the Grand Forks Mission needs funding because it's feeding upwards of 200 families daily, and they don't have the money to pay for it, a sustainable source of funds, I would like to see the city of Grand Forks, who doesn't, they have a $2 million plus a year budget, that's all raised locally. And they, but they really need, since COVID, the amount of people looking for food has increased, not exponentially, but very, very significantly. And I would like to see us, of that money, if we're not, I'd like to see us and not this committee, who's made up of people that have their own personal interests, I would like to see us saying, we're going to put 50 grand or $80,000 of that money toward the mission, so that they can fulfill the hunger needs in our community, and find the rest of it can go to the committee, for them to decide where it goes. So I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, that $100,000 of it is spent, is allocated to the committee for them to dedicate where it goes. The remaining 16, 15, whatever it is, 59,000 and change goes directly to the Grand Forks Mission.
I second.
So we got a, we got a motion to directly allocate 59,135 of that Human Needs CSG fund directly to the Northlands Rescue Mission, with the remaining 100,000 going to the Community Action Committee to do their competitive process. Does that surmise it?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, and we got a second from Ms. Osowski. Do you want to have further discussions on that? Ms. Berg, please.
Again, I appreciate the support for helping eliminate the food insecurity issues that we have in our community. President Sandy mentioned that, you know, the mission is feeding upwards of 300 people a day, but that's not necessarily just children. The mission provides limited housing support for children and families, because children aren't allowed to stay at the mission. And we're talking about children poverty. So if we're, if we're looking at a duplication of service, United Way would not be a duplication, because United Way is helping support families move out of poverty and helping ensure that there's roofs over children's head. And I would also like to mention that there is a significant amount of homeless youth in Grand Forks, and I would encourage us to meet with the homeless social worker liaison through the school system to learn a little bit more.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent idea.
Question, Mayor?
Yeah, please, Mr. Veen.
How does this motion differ from the previous motion, except for, is it just a dollar amount difference?
So this motion would, the previous motion had roughly $76,000 going towards the Northlands Rescue Mission, and the rest would have been cut from the budget. This one has a direct alloc, it's not changing the budget, other than the allocation of the 159,135 of that, 59,135 would go directly to the mission. The other 100,000 would be decided by the Community Action Committee through their competitive process. Did that help, Mr. Veen?
Yeah, kind of. It seems like it's awfully similar to the last one, although probably not exactly. Obviously, the dollar amounts are different, but.
Yeah, one cut the budget in half for the human needs. This one keeps the budget the same, just earmarks a certain portion towards the Northlands Rescue Mission.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. All right, any further comments on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that if this passes as part of the motion, if Ms. Osowski agrees, the mission then would not be eligible to apply for other funds from the Community Action Committee. Thank you, Mayor.
I will agree to that.
Okay. So at least on the Human Needs CSG, they wouldn't be able to apply. I don't, you didn't want to apply that to capital funds from CDBG, I'm assuming just this particular fund?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. All right, Ms. Lunskey?
I guess I don't understand why take it away from the group when there's different needs every year that need to be looked at, and why earmark it just for the mission? I think we should keep it as is.
Yeah, and I think President Sandy and Ms. Osowski's intention is, it's a need that's come to, you know, the forefront in the community recently, and just finding a way to get funds there and ensure that they're directed there. I believe is their intention, is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. See some nods. Yeah. All right, seeing no further discussion. Ms. Dorstad? Has everyone got the motion? All right.
All right. I'll change up the order a little bit. Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
Veen?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Weigel?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed or fails?
Same, 3 to 4. All right, motion was defeated.
Okay, Mayor, so if I may, I do want to touch on the airport quick. It's important for the folks in our community, as well as the city council, to know that all the money that's spent at the airport is government money. Airports are federal infrastructure, and our airport in North Dakota has a positive return on investment. They just don't. They're critical infrastructure for economic development. I think it's important to note that the airport did spend $3.5 million on tea hangers recently, but only 10% of that was local funds, the other 90% was federal dollars. And if the airport hadn't spent that $350,000 on tea hangers, they would have spent it on some other federal infrastructure project at the airport. Ultimately, I want to. Um, ultimately, I want to make the commitment to the airport to, I want them to know that, and I, I hope the rest of the council agrees, that if they need funding for a project, we'll be here with economic development funds next year to help them meet their federal, federal funding match. Um, I, uh, I did send an email today, Mayor, with, uh, with, um, a thought of adding some restrictions to, uh, the special events funding. I'd like to have that moved, uh, to the committee of the whole, uh, for future discussion. I think, uh, there are reasons why we should have some, some restrictions on the funds for special events, and so I'd like to have that discussion at a, at a later committee of the whole meeting if, uh, if everyone agrees.
Yeah, I think that ma- makes sense for a longer discussion, we do, tonight's really about the dollar figures, so. If that's not changing, um, the administration, it can certainly be shifted as, as needed, so.
Sounds good. Then, um, ultimately, uh, the only other thing that I had is related to the, uh, is related to, uh, the general fund. I've, I've said it before, uh, I said it last year when we changed the salary plan. Uh, I said it earlier this year when we were having our budget meetings. I said it at the preliminary, uh, meeting at the budget. I, I really, I really dislike our current salary plan. I don't like the fact that we come up with a number and everyone in the city gets the same raise, when not everyone in the city performs the same way. I also think that we need to find balance, and, and I don't believe this salary plan or the implementation this year provides that balance. The city of Grand Forks jobs aren't supposed to be the most sought after positions in our community. That's not how this is supposed to work. Our city employees enjoy competitive salaries, the best retirement, some of the best benefits, and have the advantage of being civil service employees. The private sector employees in our community are, certainly aren't providing raises like this, and to that end, they certainly aren't providing two year cumulative raises in the 15% range. Even the entity as a local government entity only provided 10% over the last two years. Our salary plan is currently an already subjective and arbitrary, and so saying that we should follow the plan when there really isn't, it's an arbitrary plan, we've already determined that, because we, we can, we can change it, and it's already been changed. And then, uh, certainly, uh, I recognize, and, and Mr. DeWey is right, our defined benefit plan was one of the best recruitment plans that we had, but it's every city in North Dakota is losing the defined benefit plan. It's not just Grand Forks, it's everyone. So right now, I believe our taxpayers deserve balance. We should strive every year to balance growth with ta- or, we should strive to, every year to balance our growth with taxes, and I don't believe growth should cost the taxpayers in their property tax bill. Our employees certainly are our greatest asset, and I hope we don't lose employees because of a redu- a reduction in a raise. However, I do believe we also need to think about our property taxpayers, and thus, Mayor, once again, our move to reduce the ECI funding to 50% with a corresponding reduction in mills. And as a general thought, I would love to see us do away with the across the board raises that are the same for everyone. I would love our department managers to put in the time to evaluate their employees, as we discussed last year. And I'd like to see our employees, uh, and our HR work to implement raises based upon merit rather than a cumulative number that's arbitrarily chosen. Thank you, Mayor, my, my motion is to reduce the ECI funding to 50%. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy, we have a motion to reduce the ECI from 75% to 50%. Do we have a second on that motion? Okay, please.
I think these past five years have been really tough on everybody. I know that there were a couple years in my job where I didn't get any pay raise, and then there were a couple years when I got like a 3%, and then I got laid off, and I had to go out and find a new job. And so I, the amount, I, I agreed with last year getting our employees up to par, but like Mr. Sandy stated, they can't, I mean, a 7% raise every year is a very excellent raise, and that's a big raise. I, I don't know if I've ever gotten a 7% raise unless I went out and found a new position. And so, um, I do second Mr. Sandy for this year.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Further comments from council? Ms. Slonsky, please.
Um, I also feel that raises should be based on merit and not just, um, given as a blanket raise. I think in the future, I'd like to see more discussion on, on that.
Thank you, Ms. Slonsky. Any other comments from council? Ms. Berg?
I also appreciate the merit-based. Um, I've seen other government systems where you can, um, reach up to that max amount, such as, um, we're proposing, but you have to like meet the certain rec- criteria. Um, so that would be nice moving forward, but I don't think our employees should have to suffer, at this time, because that wasn't done in the past.
Mayor, Mayor Bochenski, we do have a, uh, evaluation system in which people are rated. The only change that we've done, used to be you'd get a score, I'm going to say you're a 3.5. And then that 3.5 would get translated into a, a performance piece. You would have a cost of living piece, you'd have a performance piece. Currently, the, the difference now is if you meet a certain level of score, we'll say it's 2.9, you will get the 2.5% step increase. Whereas before, it would get translated into, um, something minor, minor difference, between a 3.5 and a 3.8 or a 3.25. And I think why the employees like this new system is that you do have, you're going to get evaluated. There, it is a pass fail. But your score doesn't get translated into, um, you know, a performance. And oftentimes, it, it turned out to be, you know, pennies. And then what the concern was, and it translated into, you know, why did I get a 3.6? And, you know, Joe got a 3.65, and now they, they get paid one cent more than I do. And so I think that's why they like this, this more of a, a basis of, of moving forward. But I just want to let everyone know now that probably not a lot of organizations, but everyone gets evaluated in the city of Grand Forks. You're going to get a score. The only difference is it's a pass fail now versus your score translating into a performance score. And all I'm saying is that performance score was not going to move the needle. If, if, if you think that, um, it, the amount of money that went into it, it would have to be driven by yourself, you'd want to do it, because, um, the scores did not translate into an enormous pay for performance change based upon what your score was. So, um, I just want to let you know as our board of directors that our employees are terrific. 95% of them. And the ones that are in the 5 percentile are, are notated, are described, and sometimes they don't stick around here. So I, I want to make sure you know that.
I would just further say none of the 5% are here tonight, just to make that clear. And I, I mean, I would say that, you know, the PFP plan in the past, that certainly wasn't working well, which is why people wanted a new plan, and this is, you know, we're in the emphases of this one, but.
Mayor?
Mr. Bean?
Yeah, so I wanted to ask a question of, of Mr. Phelan, or, or maybe to the whole group. We just hired this new consultant for him to come in and work with, uh, with the employees and, and I think certain council to develop a new plan that was more, that was more fair, I think is what we had talked, because there was a lot of grumbling. And, and now, it was just like a year ago, we implemented that plan, and it, is the discussion now? I'm just interested to change it and go back to the old one? Or what's, what's the intent here? Because it seems like what we did before, we hire a consultant, we did it, we accepted it. Mayor, you, you're the one that recommended the 75%. And now, uh, there's discussion that we shouldn't follow it? Maybe I'm confused.
Thank you, Mr. Bean, Mr. Weigel.
I would just ask, or answer Mr. Bean, and when we implemented this plan, I looked at, um, our human resources folks and said, will this be based on merit? And I was told that we're going to come up with a plan. I don't, I agree that all of our employees are probably great. Um, that they come to work every day and they meet a standard, except for maybe six or five that, that we've talked about. But they're not the same. I know of many police officers that go above and beyond every single day. And I know some that could probably use some coaching and, and do some things differently. I know some firefighters that go above and beyond every single day. And I, there's probably a few that could use some coaching, but they aren't on the same standard, but we're treating them all the same. That's where you lose me in some of these pay plans. If somebody's going above and beyond, they should be paid more than the guy that shows up and just happens to meet standards. I, I don't know of any other, um, jobs that do it that way. In the private sector, if you go out and you sell more than the person next to you, you get paid more. That's how it should be, and just providing everybody a blanket raise, I think is the worst thing we can do. All we're going to do is create mediocrity within our, within our city government.
Thank you, Ms. Dor- Mr. Weigel. Any further comments by council? All right, Ms. Dorstad, will, want to run us down again, please?
I want to make sure I'm clear on the motion, um, President Sandy. So it was to bring the ECI, uh, is, is the only part of your motion to bring the ECI from 75% to 50%? Or was there more to your motion?
It's bring the ECI from 75% to 50%. And thus, uh, we would reduce the mills by the, accordingly, accordingly by the amount reduced.
All right. Slonsky?
Okay, so I just need to confirm. So we're voting to go from 75 to 50?
Fifty.
Yes.
Uh, Friedols?
No.
Bean?
No.
Berg?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
Weigel?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Further discussions related to the budget?
May I approve the budget?
Oh, sorry. One second, Mr. President Sandy, we do have one more from Ms. Osowski if you wanted to, and I'll go back to you.
And this, I'm not necessarily saying remove this from the, from the budget, but I would like to move, I would like to motion to move, to move, to move the children's museum funding and the transfer of land to the JDA. I would like to just push that back one year into 2026. And the reason why is because at this point, or the last time I talked to the children's museum, which was not that long ago, they have yet to meet their fundraising goals. Every idea or everything that they have shown me is just conceptual, and they actually have no plans drawn up. I, I don't even know if they would even be able to start building in 2025, since there are no, no plans. Also, I think we need to be a little bit cautious when it comes to, uh, the new vote about the property taxes in November, and just cautionary, I would like to just not do anything with those funds, just push it all back to 2026 by one year. So the funding, which I believe is the $5 million, and the transfer of the land for the JDA.
Okay, so, okay.
Uh, Ms. Osowski, and President, and, uh, Mayor Bochenski, um, just, um, for your awareness, the way it's set up is that it's on a reimbursement basis. So, um, what would happen would no money, no monies would be spent till it's ready, and it would just set aside in the cash balance until it would be ready to inform, or it wouldn't be.
Decision later, if you decided to, we wouldn't, they're not going to get any money until they're construction ready and construction begins and they're reimbursed.
The other thing I don't want to happen is I, I don't want them, you know, I don't want to do the land transfer and then the children's museum in a push, because everything changes after November if property tax gets taken away from us, everything does. And so I don't want to see them get pushed, maybe do site prep. You know, if they don't have enough funding, maybe try to get some site prep, uh, and then try to get us to reimburse on that. I would just feel more comfortable holding off both the transfer of the land and the $5 million by one year until they can co- you know, they can tell us that they've raised enough money, they actually show us drawings, and just, and then we see how the property tax vote goes. And then, because at that point, if that passes, every, everything changes. And so I would like to see both of those things held off and pushed to 2026.
All right, we have a motion, and I guess I'll look for a second, then can add some context if anyone wants a second? All right. I, I think that the children's museum is going to be here to, to speak to this next week. Um, the JDA transfer of land is, is a non-cash, that's just moving the land to the JDA so that we can do something with it later. That does not give it to the children's museum, they would need a lease or some other agreement. So that's a non-cash transfer. We have it budgeted each year to, to pay to the children's museum over a 10-year period. I would find that to be really difficult to take that back now. That's a big piece that they use to be able to fundraise. Um, so taking that back will leave them in a hole, and would take, if you want them to get to their dollar amount, you're taking away a big chunk that's helping them raise other dollars.
Yeah, I'm not saying taking it away, I'm just saying that I think we need to be very cautious with the way that we spend our money, especially coming up with our property tax vote, and I would just like to see it on hold. We, as a city, you know, obviously have voted, um, to give this money to the children's museum. I, you know, based on our budget, and I would just like to see us hold on to it for one more year and, you know, not write any checks to them if they do happen to break ground, which I find is very unlikely, even in 2025, with where the children's museum was the last time I spoke with them, which was not that long ago. So.
Mr. Yeah, and maybe this is a question from Ms. Dorstad or Mr. Gass, and I think that the $5 million was a 2024 allocation, so you're, you'd have to be, you'd be making a budget amendment to 2024? Wouldn't be a 2025 budget piece, is that correct?
That initial amount, correct, was a 2024 budget item, so it goes unspent, it just sits in the fund, um, until they're ready to move forward.
And then what was the allocation for 2025, as we talk about this budget? Because you'd be making, you'd probably need second, separate motions.
Correct. The allocation for 2025 was that first $400,000 of the 10 years.
So $400,000 is in the 2025 budget.
So what are we at, like, 5.4 million then, so far in funds that we have set aside for them?
2024 has already been allocated.
Right, that five, that's that $5 million, right?
Yeah, so we would have to do some type of amendment, it wouldn't be part of the 2025 budget.
What was included in the 2024 budget was a total of, um, $5.5, and then it's $400,000 in 2025.
So almost $6 million then is, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with us being a little bit cautious, you know, on some of these funds, and, you know, just kind of holding off, seeing if the museum actually brings back, uh, buildings, you know, like, like drawing plans. We have seen nothing from them, and I'm not saying take the money away. I, I'm saying push it off for a year, you know, we can earn interest on that money as a city, and, you know, we could, I, I don't think it's that much, it might be, you know, like, what, $8,000? I'm, I'm not sure, but we could use that for something else.
Yeah, we do currently earn interest on it, it's in the city's account, so we are currently earning interest on it, which at 5%, $5 million would be out $250,000 a year. a year.
So, but we can just hold off and maybe use the interest that we use for a year and like put that towards our aquatic center, you know?
Yeah, we are doing that.
And we are. What you're obligated for and set aside, it would sit aside till, we are earning interest on those funds. So I think we're on the same page. It sits there until they're ready. We get interest on it as it sits there. What was approved was, were those allocations. But no money would be spent or distributed until they're ready and it would be on a reimbursement basis.
I would like to see us hold off on that until 2026.
Mayor Bochensky, I was just going to highlight some dates. On September 30th, we're going to have that special city council meeting to update both on the indoor sports and aquatic and also the children's museum. And in our intent, if the city council is so inclined after that date, we'd bring it to city council on October 7th, where you'd be able to make motions. And two of the motions, some of the motions relate specifically to the indoor sports and aquatic, but two of the motions will be to look at the master plan that includes the children's museum. And so I think you'll be asked, do you want to move forward with land lease with the children's museum? And if so, under what terms would you want to move forward with? And then the second would be, you know, transferring that four to five acre parcel that we've talked about to the JDA so that the JDA owns that. So that'll be in front of you on September 30th and October 7th. And specifically on October 7th, you'd be able to make those motions because if some of the money has been set aside in 2024, because we're going to want to get your input on whether you want to continue to move forward at the Alara Center site. The other question you would have, even if you don't move forward the Alara Center site and they go back to the Choice site, that would be a further discussion regarding that lease that we've already created. So there'll be plenty of discussion here in the next few weeks regarding what you'd like to see. Councilmember Mosowski.
For the good of the order, we do have a motion and a second, so we should vote on it. See, is there any further discussion on that item?
So is there harm in pushing it? I'm just trying to figure out, like, can you pull it, at one point, when they go, hey, here's our design, you're happy with it, can we pull that money back?
It's exactly, I mean, we have a contract right now with them. That's, has it been approved, contract, or where we have the contract?
Mayor and council members, we had an agreement that was approved. It's, and there were, again, a number of conditions, one of which is they had to demonstrate that they had the resources to be able to complete the project before money would be expended. And Ms. Storsted is right, it is a reimbursement methodology. They have to come forward with the construction expenses first. There also has to be a certification from their engineer that they've progressed to a certain spot. So there are various conditions before funds would be distributed to them. It didn't, and it did tie into the funding, the timing. Doesn't mean that that's going to happen. It's going to be dependent upon how they do with their fundraising, how they do with their construction. You know, it was targeted timelines under the terms of the agreement with the understanding that, you know, it was looking towards 2024, 2025 for that type of distribution. Again, dependent upon them satisfying all the various conditions. And the agreement was, the agreement with respect to the location down by, on the altar facility on the south end of town.
Okay. So if we did pull it this time, we would be reneging on the contract essentially if we're pulling an allocation from there.
Yeah, there is an agreement that was presented to the city council that was approved.
Okay.
Mr. Gostad?
Yes.
Just a question, and I think Mr. Phelan partially answered that. We'll probably get into much more of these details at next Monday's meeting, is that right? That's kind of the intent, although a number of questions are arising and I have a number of those too that I would like answered, but it seems like that's what the intended, I guess, venue is to answer that. Because I would understand that the project would have to be under construction and then we would, they would bill us and we would reimburse them for whatever that dollar amount, $400,000 a year, however that would take place. But they don't have to have the money raised and be under contract before it will be under construction.
That's, Councilmember Veen and members of the city council, that's correct because it is a reimbursement mechanism. So they have to have the work done and then they come in and request for the funds. And the timing of it is, I understand it's going to be September 30th because the discussion point will be before I start working on modifying an agreement with respect to a new location. I wanted to assure that the council was consistent and understanding and giving me that direction before we start drafting those types of agreements to modify the funding portion of it. And as Mr. Phelan mentioned, ground lease, a long-term ground lease. I didn't want to expend time until I was assured that the council was satisfied with that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gostad.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Of Mr. Gostad. Okay, so you stated, so technically, we really can't do anything because of our contract, correct? Like if we want to be in compliance with the contract that we have, right, for the funding?
My recommendation is that you try to comply with the contract, yeah?
So, but here's a question that I have is, I was, I was under the impression when we first discussed the children's museum and this contract, that these funds would only be available to the children's museum, like, if approved from the council. But now I'm hearing that there is a contract and are we obligated over the next 10 years? I kind of understood, you know, like the first $5 million, but going forward for the 10 years. So are you saying we are legally obligated over the next 10 years to continue to give them $400,000 a year?
It was subject, if my memory serves me, I believe there was a provision about subject to budget provisions.
Okay, okay, okay. So there is something in there about it being about the budget? So, okay. So if we change the budget, we're still allowed to in future years adjust that amount then?
Yeah, that was one, I believe that was one of the conditions is that it was subject to budgetary determinations on an annual basis.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor. I believe a yes would be to suspend the allocations to the children's museum for the 2025 budget or, and past budgets? So you would, I don't know how we can take from 2024 and move to 2026. We can increase our budget for 2025.
For now, what you could do is decrease the 2025 budget, push it out a year, which would reduce the 2025 budget by that $400,000. Probably a separate action would be to amend the '24 budget if you wish to decrease the existing budget.
So which one, do you want to start with the 2025 budget? Okay, so we'd be cutting the funds for the children's museum for the 2025 budget, essentially? Well, we can't, we're not allocating for, we're doing the 2025 budget right now, so we'd have to add those later. Okay. Okay, is that consistent with what you're seconding, Mr. Weigel?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep, please.
It was mentioned that the interest that's accruing is being used to leverage other entities. Is this going to negatively impact that?
So what I meant by that is our Fund 2163 has, in that fund, cash accounts that earn interest. So any interest, we're, we hold that cash till it gets distributed to children's museum. So it's the city's interest earnings that, on those funds, that sits there in our cash account. Does that help?
So in 2163, we just have cash, so the interest just continues to add to the 2163 fund.
So the city would retain the interest earnings for whatever you determine its use in Fund 2163?
We currently are already retaining interest until the funds go out. All right, any further discussion or comments? All right, please, Ms. Storsted.
All right, Mosowski. Weigel?
No.
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
Veen?
No.
President Sandy?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you. All right, any further motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve the budget.
Got a motion? Sandy and a second. I believe we've got, do we have, was there some motions that have been applied to tonight? Let me go back and look here.
Just the ECI change to decrease the 50 percent with the corresponding decrease in mills. And was there one more?
Mayor, it was the.
Wording on the franchise.
The franchise, perfect. It's not a budget item, it's not a dollar item.
All right, we've got a motion under those terms and a second. Let's do another roll call vote, please, Ms. Storsted. I'll get the 2025 budget officially passed.
Prior to doing this, President Sandy, would you be open to also including in your motion the other items included as far as the resolution of fees and the franchise ordinance amendments?
Of course. Thank you, Ms. Storsted.
Thank you. All right then, Berg?
Yes.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Friedols?
Yes.
Veen?
Yes.
Mosowski? Weigel?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
Yes.
Approved.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for the work on it and we're moving forward. We've got a whole rest of the agenda to still do. All right. All right, that is it for item three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances. Do we have any item forces and comments as they relate to action items? Any citizen comments related to our action items tonight?
None for action items.
All right, move on to five action items, items that council members wish polled for this evening. All right, we look for a motion to approve items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5.
I'm approval.
Got a motion approved from Ms. Mosowski, second from Mr., I'm going to give it to Ms. Berg, she had her hand up. All those, seeing no further conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Six information items, Ms. Storsted?
6.1, investment portfolio management summary as of August 31st.
Thank you.
And 6.2 is your statement of changes in cash balance as of July 31st.
Thank you. Item seven, approval of minutes and bills?
7.1, vendor list as is attached.
I'm approval.
Got a motion approved from Ms. Mosowski, second from Ms. Lunskey. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
And 7.2, yeah, 7.2 minutes from September 3rd.
I'm approval.
Got a motion to approve from Ms. Mosowski, second from Ms. Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Once again, on behalf of myself and Ms. Mosowski, we'd like to thank the finance department for getting those minutes up to date and within the month that we're in. So much appreciated for the work that goes into that. All right, move on to eight, citizen comments of general nature. Any comments this evening?
We do. Mr. Sean Boclear?
Mr. Boclear?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm excited to hear about quality of life and hopefully it gets to quality of government. And one of my comments is the quality of government as a citizen here, you don't respond to any of the comments or questions. And that's why I'm here tonight. I have three basic questions I've asked the last 90 days related to Fu Fang Land. Why hasn't the city acted upon that? What was the city's role as it relates to the 10 Chinese nationals that were placed on U N D's campus? Nine males, one female that did not speak English other than translation. And finally, Mr. Veen commented about the citizens' meeting, right? Citizens' wrap-up meeting, the citizens never got a voice despite, I am in the Fu Fang process. There's over 5,000 people that wanted to vote on it. That never happened. They spent over $150,000, which I contributed also, taking them to court, and that got denied. So I thought I'd try a different approach to hopefully connect on the importance of this. So it's a child's game. We played it called Ducks and Decoys. Any of you played Ducks and Decoys? It's kind of based on the hunting concept. Birds of the same feather flock together. It's a simple game, right? Somebody sits across from you or stands across from you. And you tell a story about how wonderful this game is going to be and the big benefits they're going to receive out of this game. And you say, hey, it's a game of skill, you've got to pay attention. It goes like this. So you wave your hand out here, right, get their attention while they're looking at this. You slap them alongside the onion with the other hand, right? And they ask, what was that? Well, decoy. That was a decoy. So, but it continues on. Let's do it one more time. So you wave your hand out here, guess where the other person's looking? Right here? You slap them alongside the head and you say, what was that? That was the real thing. And you go, well, how does this relate to Fu Fang and Grand Forks? I see some puzzled faces there. Let me give you an example. China is pretty much ducks and decoys is what they do with us on a big basis in the United States. Give you two examples on the West Coast. I don't know how many are familiar. Bunch of cranes there to offload the container ships. Guess what they found on those cranes that were manufactured by China? Cameras and listing devices. Big surprise, right? Ducks and decoys. What about on the East Coast? Are you familiar with a senator or congressman that had an aide? Right, turns out to be what? An agent from China. An agent from China. So it doesn't, Texas, right? They wanted to build a wind farm down there, right? Turned out to be they're spying next to an air force base. So we come back here to Grand Forks, North Dakota. Do you really think China wanted to build a corn and wet milk plant in Grand Forks, North Dakota? Right? The big processors don't. Hmm. So what was 10 Chinese nationals doing on U N D campus? I asked a lot of questions. Nobody is, can tell me why they were wound up there. What do you think they were there for? Right? We had top flight. Think potentially it could be top hack? They're hacking at the U N D campus. What do you think they were after? My time is running out here. Two books I recommend. I'm a Farmer, here's one on weather, here's one on critical thinking. Maybe you can put the two together. But the other good thing is, I think we're going to finally get some attention. I don't know if you saw August 22nd, the FBI director, Christopher Dray, excuse me, Christopher Ray, shows up in Bismarck, first time ever at the state office. I wonder what he was there for? Lots of activity in Bismarck all the way over here. Right? And finally, so it'll be interesting to see what happens, but I do answer my questions. Why do federal agencies like talking to governments or elected officials? Why do they like investigating them? Because if you don't answer the questions, obstruction of justice. Am I right? Keep that in mind. Thank you for attending.
Move on to nine, we're going to have executive session here, so that would be, was there any other comments? Sorry, Ms. Storsted.
That was the only one.
All right, thanks. All right, so. Would look for a motion to enter into executive session. The general topic of the executive session would be to discuss the pending litigation of East Central Regional Water District versus the City of Grand Forks, United States District Court Case Number 3-20-CV2-208 and North Dakota Supreme Court Case Number 20230389. And we would be doing this under the legal authority of North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2 for attorney consultation on the pending litigation. So if I could get a motion. We got a motion from Ms. Mosowski, second from Ms. Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. So at this time, I would ask, I think, any staff members that aren't directly related to this to take off, so I don't have to list so many later. And chief or someone, if they want to man the doors and keep us cleared out, that'd be great.
And Mayor, let's make sure Holly will shut down the television, but she'll give us a thumbs up when she's ready.
Yeah, so Holly, if you want to, just with the on-air, if you want to let us know when you've got that done, or you can come out and give us a thumbs up when you, when you've got that. that. Online, we've got President Sandy, Mr. Ken Veen, Sherry Lundmark. We also have myself, Brandon Bochensky, Tricia Lunskey, Mike Friedols, Todd Phelan, Dan Gostad, Al Grasser, and Melanie Parvey. I didn't botch a single name. So with that, our date and time, it is September 16th at approximately, what is it, 7:33 PM? And at this point, we are going to move into executive session. So if you could kill the cameras in the...